Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of December 12, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, on to announcements and committee reports. I've got a couple of announcements. There is a civil service commissioner opening. The Civil Service Commission has one vacancy open for an alternate commissioner. And alternate commissioners are a mayor-appointed position that serves three years from the date of first appointment. Alternate commissioners participate in debate and the deliberations of the commission on regular business of the commission and can serve fully in meetings when a commissioner is absent. Applications may be submitted online. Look for the Talent Bank application. Also, Senior Activity Center has free visits and pictures with Santa on December 14 from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Joffrey Castle Celtic Christmas, December 14, 6:30 at the Port Transit Shed. It's the Chambers Annual Christmas Concert. Let's see there. Limited number of reserved seats, but no charge for general admission. Attendees are encouraged to provide food, gift, or cash donations in support of local food banks and Toys for Tots. Horse-drawn trolley rides downtown, December 17, 12 to 3, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. And the Depot Fine Art Show, open daily until the 18th from 12 to 6. A quick trestle update. Had a great little fundraiser kickoff on Tuesday of last week. Those of you who came, thanks for coming. It was really good. We're at, we estimate $250,000 to get the trestle restored. So far, we've raised $165,000. So it's a great first start. And more good news, we really only need one more permit from the Army Corps, but we don't need that permit to get going on our initial construction. So we've got all the permits. We're waiting on the Coast Guard notice to mariners to get out there, and we should be able to start after the first of the year to at least do some of the demolition work. So we think we've got the contractor lined up to do that. So pretty excited we're actually going to get started. And again, to answer a lot of questions, we will have, as we get the trestle repaired, we will have additional enhanced security measures. So that is it from me. Yeah, we'll start with the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The HACs committee met last Thursday morning, council members Cleland McGrath, Walters, and I, and Ms. Stewart, Joanne Stewart, from the Planning Department. And then we had quite a few people attend virtually from different service organizations and interested community members, which we always love to see. So thanks to everyone for coming. We were very excited to speak with Sandy York from Community Action about the contract for next year that's being reviewed by staff and also by Community Action staff and City of Anacortes staff about what the scope of work will look like, the resource specialists that will help with information and referrals with better wraparound care and care coordination, and better connections with other services like energy assistance, employment specialization. And one of the things that was exciting about how Community Action will help complement what the Family Center is doing is the amount of people that Community Action serves that are over 60 years old, which is about a third of them. About a quarter of people are disabled, and more than half of them are single with no children. So this is going to be a great way to augment the services and the reach that we currently have. They are going to be rent-free at an Anacortes Housing Authority property, which will be fantastic. And then the city is paying for the, for the position, the staff position. And one of the things we learned also is that, well, that we knew the position would be full-time, but they will hope to have two people there all the time, and one will be rotating through. So there will be one regular person, and then people rotating through who do different things. So that's just going to be great. We talked about the Anacortes Fire Department's grant that came through Association of Washington Cities that expands support for our community paramedic program, and that will be through, will be contracting with the Anacortes Family Center. And it's a six-month pilot with $40,000 dedicated to that. And that will have a community navigator position and a substance use disorder staff person also for direct support for clients in crisis. We talked about our two ordinances that we have not passed. There's the parking ordinance, which has a lot of technicalities that are related to it that I won't go into here, but that one's going to take a little bit while to bring back because it requires more of a rewrite than we initially thought. But we're hoping to have the sidewalk blocking ordinance come back next week. And the last thing we discussed was a poverty simulation that Community Action is doing on February 7 for up to 125 people in our community. It's a half-day where teams role-play a month and a life of someone who is low-income trying to juggle schoolwork bills and resources, with the outcomes being a better understanding and more empathy and recognition of what people are struggling with on a daily basis. And it's, it's been very highly reviewed by people who've experienced it. It's to redo, help reduce barriers and create opportunities for people. So it'll be a great thing. All the city's elected officials will be invited, and I hope we're all able to attend. And that wasn't the last thing. I apologize. There's also, we talked about the cold-weather shelter, and there's $35,000 from a CDBG grant that can go to local motels to house people during the cold winter months. And there's also a motel voucher program that's separate from that. And that is, is happening right now. That's, that's starting up. And then Christ Episcopal Church is working to create some tiny homes on their property, and possibly four. So that's early days, but that would be something that we'll be, look forward, we'll look forward to hearing more about as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Planning Committee is next.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Planning Committee met just before this meeting. Christine Cleland McGrath, Carolyn Moulton, myself, with Planning Director Don Meesmer. We talked, first of all, about the Christmas lights in the Central Business District. The Planning Department in the Chamber tried something different this year. You may have seen the rope lights around the trunks of the trees. We understand there's some dissatisfaction, and our committee advocated going back to the more traditional lights in the branches for next year. We talked to some about the MJB development and how permitting is proceeding associated with that development. It's much more complicated than any typical commercial construction, and more complicated than a typical long plat. We anticipate there being a framework development plan process, a development agreement process, and a long subdivision process. So there are a couple of different things in process, and staff is going to be developing a flowchart to familiarize us all with that process so that we can adequately engage in it. We talked a little bit about looking at permanent regulations for parklets and sidewalk use permits. Those regs would support the parklets and integrate their permitting with the sidewalk use permits that we already have. And then finally, we talked a bit about the latest port concept plan for the North Basin, and general consensus on the committee and among staff is we all seem to like it. Some more on that maybe in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Public Safety Committee. Ms. Cleland.
Yeah. So Ms. Hubick, Mr. Carter, and I, Chief Floyd, Chief Harris, and Mayor Miller were all at attendance for December 6, Public Safety Committee meeting. From the police perspective, they are, Chief Floyd is working with HR to better define the part, the new part-time parking enforcement position. They are doing some interviews for some police officers in the next week or so. They're really trying some creative ways for recruitment, one being providing $11 to provide results for tests in the, it's called a public safety test that everyone has to take. It could be, the cost can get high when you're applying to multiple different municipalities. So this is an opportunity for us to provide kind of a coupon so that they can get their results presented to Anacortes and hopefully encourage a larger pool of applicants. We're actually going to host on January 29 a public safety testing, test locally, which hopefully will attract some more folks to not only take the test, but get to know Anacortes and possibly consider employment here. We talked a little bit about the levy lift and what that entails. We also discussed kind of call volume since 2018 through 2022. You know, this year is getting pretty close to where we were last year. 2020 was obviously a lot lower, but we should have an annual report from the chief by the end of January of next year. So that's always a nice kind of summary of what's been going on in the department. And then from Chief Harris, you know, they officially received the alternate response team grant, which provides a mental health, mental health person for seven and a half hours and a social worker for 20 hours each week. And so the plan is to kind of, to contract with Anacortes Family Center because they've got access to those, those professionals. We're hoping to have it in place by January 3, and it's really only for six months, this grant. So we've got to spend all of the funds within six months. But the other thing is, is we also need to, this is an opportunity to develop a program that makes sense for our community, and also to keep statistics, because we're not really sure what's going to happen after six months. But whatever it is, we, we'd like to know the effectiveness of it on the ground. Then the other kind of exciting news is that there is a recruitment academy for volunteers for the fire department. So if anyone is interested in having training, getting training and becoming a volunteer firefighter, it's a good way to get started in the profession. Sign up by January 31. Chief Burbank, who's one of our new folks at the fire department, is going to run the program. It's Tuesday and Thursday nights and some Saturdays. And if you are interested, contact the fire department. So we've got a couple of volunteers that are active and some on the roster, but we're always looking for more, more folks to get involved in that capacity. And I think that is about it.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. Port City meeting happened back on the 6th. Councilmember Carter and myself attended with different port commissioners and staff from both the port and the city. So we, it was a pretty quick meeting. We reviewed more stuff kind of on the port side than we have on the city side. They are working with us on the Shoreline Master Program. So we're right at about the third version of it, and we were talking about how Don's been working with Brenda on this, and then both the city and the port have been working with the Department of Fish and Wildlife to determine areas that are going to be most impacted. And we are hoping to bring this back to council in the next month or so. They also gave us an update on the North and West Basin as well. So it's being talked about in multiple positions, multiple committees, focusing more, most on the North Basin work. They're at about 90% design for the RV park and the bathroom shower area. They're waiting on a little bit more feedback before RCO funding. So that's the Recreation and Conservation Board. Funding actually comes through. They've put a lot of work on this, starting over the summer, and so they're taking a lot of things into consideration, how this is a place where people park when there are festivals, but it's also a heavy haul route. So we've got to pay attention to lots of different types of traffic that moves around. And those were the biggest things. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a Personnel Committee meeting also.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yeah. So we just had our Personnel meeting today at 4 o'clock with Councilmember Young and Councilmember Moulton. It was, we don't have them too frequently, so it was nice to see everyone in there. You know, we begin, we, nah, sorry. HR has begun labor relation talks with the Teamsters. Their, their contract expires at the end of this year, and they're continuing to kind of discuss what expectations each side has. There's some staffing updates. There are some folks, some new folks in HR. Gunderson, Ms. Gunderson, I believe, is a new one. Gordon Hale with Network, is a network administrator, and then Brian Walker, who's replaced Becky Fox at the wastewater treatment plant. We've got a fiber position, fiber technician there on their second round of interviews. We've got a couple of other positions that were made that came up during our 2023 budget discussion. So those positions, we're working on getting descriptions for those new positions and, and looking to put it out for hire early next year. There's a couple of changes in some folks' titles that they're working on, just to clarify. And then finally, for general updates, they've, there was an initiative to do an anti-harassment training for all employees. They started in October, and they've got almost everyone there except for a couple, couple few folks who have fallen through the cracks, and they should get it shortly. Managers had more extensive training, and it was a pretty good online training. We're going to try to, do it every other year, and then also do some kind of equity and inclusion the following year. The usual performance reviews are happening in a timely manner. It should be done by the end of the year. And then finally, starting next year, they're going to work on a Personnel Policy Update. So department heads have been asked if there's any feedback about what needs to be adjusted. That will be done. I think that is it.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. I really want to say thank you to the city of Anacortes and all of the citizens that reached out to me during our time of bereavement. It was a very difficult time, but I was warmed by the outpouring of sympathy and outreach. It really warms a heart when you're in the middle of darkness. And so I looked forward to coming home and seeing the faces that I did. But I really just want to say thank you. I heard you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other announcements or committee reports? Okay, we're on to item four, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council. Anything that's not on our agenda? We have a number of agenda items later on if you want to comment on those, but if you have something that's not on the agenda and you'd like to address council. I have one member signed up, Mary Jo McCardle. And I think you know the drill. And you can pull that mic down. It won't. And make sure the green light is on.
There we go.
There we go. Got it.
I just have one comment. Today I received a notice in my email that said, updated city council meeting. And I was, found it very, very difficult to find what that updated information was. So I would just like to ask if there's any way when an update is made to a previously published meeting of any kind from any group, that there be a mechanism that the highlighted or updated information, the updated information is somehow highlighted, so one doesn't have to go through the entire packet of information to glean what the updated information is. Thank you.
Seems fair. We got it. Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the council that didn't sign up, been online? I'm looking for a hand. If one is raised, I just went off that page. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, council. Mr. Young.
I move we approve the consent agenda, items A through F.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're on to other business, item six, starting with item 6A, Skagit Habitat for Humanity, proposed project, West Fifth Street. And Mr. Meesmer will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Thank you for your patience on that. So Mayor, council, members of the audience, city staff have been working with Skagit Habitat for Humanity now going on about a year, maybe a little more, on a piece of property the city owns at West Fifth. It's about 3610 West Fifth. And throughout that time, the whole idea was to try and provide some affordable housing units. The site itself is about 16,500 square foot, and we have been working with Skagit Habitat for Humanity to look at how five cottages would fit on that site. It's in the R2A use zone, and based on what the architect has drawn up preliminarily, it would in fact allow for five units there. The property was first purchased back in 1999 for $67,200 for the purposes of a park. Since that time, another parcel, tract A, was dedicated to the city through the Sterling Place plat as a drainage appurtenance or drainage pond. And in working with the Public Works Department, it was determined that that drainage basin would not need that, that particular drainage pond, and that our stormwater system's working just fine without it. And so throughout this time, we've been looking at this parcel as would the city be interested in leasing it to Habitat for Humanity or potentially selling it. And of course, that's a question for council at some point. I do have a few slides I'd like to go through, and then Habitat has a presentation that they'd like to bring forward as well. So again, this is the site purchased in 1999. See the site where my pointer is here, 16,500 square feet. It's in the middle of a neighborhood, fully developed on all sides. It's in the R2A use zone, and at, at some point, the Skagit Habitat for Humanity proposed a $1 monthly lease for the site. This is a site plan, preliminary site plan that was drawn up by the architect. You can see how the buildings fit in rather nicely with parking off the alley, and required setbacks all met, and open space met as well. Couple of floor, floor plans for the main floor and upper floor, they're pretty much all the same. And some elevations as well on what the buildings would look like. And it looks like they would probably fit in very, very well with the surrounding neighbors. And this is the, this is tract A, which is over on West Sixth in Minnesota. And again, it, it's about 13,000 square feet, but it was dedicated for the purposes of drainage to the City of Anacortes. And the idea is that this could become a neighborhood park, which would be, I think, easily, more easily accessed than the one in the middle of the block. And this is the plat that dedicates it as a stormwater tract. And that's all I have. I will bring up the slides and at this time introduce Ms. Tina Teat with Skagit for Humanity.
Thank you very much, city council members, Mayor, for having us here today to talk about what the possibilities are for partnership between the City of Anacortes and Skagit Habitat for Humanity. A little back history on me. I worked in homeless services for eight years. And the reason I took the job at Habitat for Humanity was because I felt like we needed to work on the root causes of homelessness and not just provide a Band-Aid. The Band-Aid is needed, don't get me wrong, but if we don't start working on the root causes of homelessness, we're just going to continue to provide Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid. We have to stop the bleeding. And the best way to do that is with affordable housing. Homelessness is a housing problem. So with that, I'm going to tell you how Habitat can address the root causes of homelessness and how a partnership between Anacortes and Skagit Habitat would be a good idea. Three facts from the 19, 2019, 2020 U.S. Census. Some of this information may have changed. Over a third of families who rent in our communities do so because of a profound lack of affordable home inventory, and it just keeps getting worse. The prices keep going up. The land is hard to get. So we're not going to see it get any better with builders and developers who are for-profit. Forty, 47.7, or three in seven households in Skagit County are housing cost burdened, with 80% of these earning less than $35,000 per year. You may have already seen all this because Mr. Walters has a great slide, but I'm just going to go through this a little bit and just remind you how bad it really is. Families living in substandard housing have a higher rate of child poverty and need more social services and financial assistance. Child poverty is one of the root causes of homelessness. There's child trauma. Living in substandard housing, children don't do as well in school. They have a less likelihood of going on to a college or trade school. And then social services and financial assistance. We already have a burdened social services network. And if we don't take some pressure off of that, we can't serve others who maybe need it in a different way. So here's, I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. Some substandard apartment complexes that rent for astronomical amounts. And like I said, this is information, it might be a little old. These rates have likely gone up considerably since this PowerPoint was put together. And there is your Habitat home, which would be between 950 and 1,200 a month for a home that somebody builds equity in, they own it. They're not just month after month after month putting away into rent. These are people who will be building equity for future, their future children to get them out of poverty. So they do sweat equity, between 250 and 500 hours of sweat equity. They help build their own homes. They're very invested in their home. And here's just some examples of other homes that we have done. So the outcome of our mission, increase the inventory of quality affordable homes through individual gifts, grants, sponsorships, volunteer labor, and store sales. That's how we are able to operate as a nonprofit. We're not in this to make money. We are in this to help affordable housing and help families who really deserve to have a better life. And then we create opportunities for hardworking, low-income households to purchase these homes with monthly mortgages 25 to 35% less than their rent. We provide them with financial education, support coaches throughout the process, and access to down payment assistance programs. Support sustainability through our store on Riverside Drive. So if you haven't been to the store, go to the store. All of the staff at the store help us build houses, and it's just a great fun place to go. When hardworking families gain access to an affordable quality home, dependence is replaced with self-reliance and families become net contributors to the local economy and tax base. When hardworking families gain access to an affordable quality home, trauma of living in substandard housing is removed and children do better in school. The need for social services and financial assistance safety nets is reduced or eliminated. When hardworking families gain access to an affordable quality home, the cycle of generational poverty is broken. Children launch into adult lives with hope and opportunities. Parents build equity for the future. So we're grassroots organizations that started in 1994. We've completed 40 home builds and we've repaired 40 homes. We used to do a repair program, critical repair. We haven't done it in a while, but we are planning to bring it back. And then we currently are finishing a home, it's not a build, it is a renovation of our 41st family in La Conner. So we'll have 41 families that we have helped. Then we have four lots in Mount Vernon that we will start building in early 2023. Why should Anacortes lease/sell the land to Skagit Habitat? To provide affordable housing to people that live in Anacortes or that work in Anacortes and want to live there too. The best option is working with a nonprofit like Habitat that can build affordable homes. So we would prioritize any homes that we build in Anacortes for people who either live here already or that work here and want to live here. They don't have to commute so far. How is a Habitat home kept affordable? We have written into our deeds a 20-year affordability with a first right of refusal. So if a family decides that they want to sell their home before that 20 years is up, then they will get 1.5% compounded annually back in their equity. And we would purchase the home back for that and then turn around and sell it to another family to keep it in affordability. We are going to be looking at land lease options. So the properties that we are going to build in the future, future will likely have a land lease with up to 99-year affordability built into the land lease. And how can they be kept? Oh, I already said this part. 99 years. And that is my presentation. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Am I allowed to take questions?
Yeah, thank you. Oh yeah, no, we, that's why you're here, to take the questions.
Good, good, good.
Thank you very much for the presentation. All right, council, and it is open for public comment, so if there's any member of the public that wants to comment before I unleash council on you with the questions. All right, who's first?
Mayor.
Ms. Moulton, and then Mr. Young.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tate, for your presentation. It's great to learn and, and learn, learn more background about your organization. Can you remind us what the income range is for potential homebuyers?
So we, we are serving between 30 and 60% of the AMI currently.
Great. And I like that you alluded to the, because I think the 20-year first right of refusal is that, that's a short time when we think of perpetual affordability. So I would want to make sure that we do, we go toward the 99 years. And just out of curiosity too, what are your main funding sources as an organization?
A lot of our funding comes from government. So we have CBDG funding from the cities and the county for mostly like down payment assistance. Of course, when we sell the homes, that becomes, you know, sort of an income. It's not really an income, we just take that money and then flip it into more homes. But we do have donations, we have regular donors. We are growing that donor base, we want to grow that donor base of individuals. A lot of businesses, we do one big fundraiser a year and another smaller fundraiser, and there's some third-party fundraisers that happen. We also have our store, which is the bulk of our income. It brings in just under $1 million, up to $1 million a year. So that, that's a big bulk of, of our funding, but we, we do get other, other sources.
That's awesome, thank you. I had no idea the store generated that much income. My last question is about when, when the homes sell and how often roughly they turn over? Do you have any information on that?
Yes, we actually have not had a sale, well, we had one sale. That was the one in La Conner. That the woman who owned it and her children, she married and moved into a house with her husband, and so she sold the house back to us, which we did rent out for a couple of years because it was right of COVID. And we will never do that again. It just didn't turn out too well. But that's the only one that was, has been sold back to us. We only have had one go in default. So of the 40, that, that's our statistics.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. First of all, you know, I, Ms. Tate and I are leadership Skagit alumni together and had the pleasure of working with her on a number of projects. About Habitat for Humanity, I am just impressed, I really am, because it's the first time, well, first it's a superb organization that seeks to, you know, lift up. But it's the first time as we talk about homelessness and housing, that I've heard a plan that allows beyond the initial entrance, that there's a plan that allows equity accumulation, you know, at a set rate such that even if the person or organization decides that this no longer works for them, it's a way to also keep it affordable for the next owner to come along. Now that is a brilliant concept. I think we all want to help, but I think by adding that into any mix, it really does allow it to, to help the next one beyond the first one. And I think that that was important and I found that impressive. I do think though, that as this continues to go forward, I would challenge the city or the organizations that we have, whether that's HACs Committee or any of the others, to look at the, you know, at the amount of money that we're putting toward this issue, that if land is a part of the process of what we will need, that part of that money that we are using to try to address this issue goes also toward lot purchases. Because, you know, we, you know, with lots coming online, and if we're going to continue to perpetuate this, and if we're already funding part of this, it would behoove us to begin to also use part of that funding to acquire additional plots of land that will allow us to continue to do this and expand this. I think it's a wonderful thing. I thought your presentation was superb. I think Habitat for Humanity is an upstanding organization that teaches people to give back and allows you to do so. So, thank you.
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. Young, for the, the point about basically it's, it's expensive land here, so that's very well taken. A very quick question. I, I saw in the presentation there are four house projects lined up in Mount Vernon, and assuming this project goes forward, that's nine, so that's significant expansion. Is the organization able to do essentially all nine at the same time? Or is it going to be kind of staggered over a few years?
I'm actually going to be pushing for 12 in two and a half years. So that's, we will get it done.
That's awesome.
Anybody that knows me, knows that it will happen.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. Two questions. Are there preferences for like partnering with local banks? Do you have people specifically that live close to a bank that they can go to to make this easy? Because like you said, commuting is a big deal, it's inconvenient for people, and if they have to take time off of work to drive an hour both ways to talk to a bank, that could hinder them. And then, second question, have you ever built anything other than a house? Apartments or condos are kind of a mess when it comes to HOAs and stuff, but like anything that maybe isn't a standalone?
Excellent questions, thank you. As far as the banks, we work with several different banks. We just now are going into the conventional, normally Habitat holds their own mortgages. However, we are changing that because as we increase the number of builds, we are going to need that money back faster. So we are working with several different banks. And there are quite a few that have good programs for the, for the homebuyer. So that shouldn't be an issue as far as travel to the bank or anything like that. And I'm so glad you asked the question about, you know, apartments, things like that. We don't do rentals. However, our board decided in our last strategic retreat that we will focus on multifamily. So more townhomes and things like that. At some point down the line, I think we'll, we'll concentrate on like triplexes, townhomes. Watcom Habitat, you know, is doing a project in Everson that we want to also do, and it's 30 townhome units. So that's my, you know, that's my, my reach in the, in the coming years to find a piece of property that we could do a project like that. But at some point in time, you know, I would personally like us to do some sort of a condo situation where we can help single people, you know, adults, adults with disabilities, elderly, that kind of a thing that can purchase. I'd like to see us do some of that, but that's kind of all up in the air at this point. But multifamily is definitely a focus for us and going forward. We have the four that we're already committed to. And then, you know, if we do this project with the cottage homes, gets us a little closer to that multifamily. But yeah, going forward, we'll do that. Thank you.
Ms. Cleland.
Thank you. So can you just remind me, you said the 20-year option to, your affordability, affordability option to buy it back, after 20 years, what, can you remind me what happens? Is, can it go on the open market?
Yes, after the 20-year, currently, and like I said, we are looking to change this. Currently, after 20 years, it can go up on the market in, at market rate.
Okay, and so the, the idea of doing the 99-year land lease would kind of extend it probably three more generations potentially?
Right, yes.
Okay, that, that makes sense. I just, I didn't quite remember it. We've had a ton of meetings, the HACs Committee with you and Mr. Workman. I feel like we were in like COVID lockdown and we were all on screens for the last couple of years. So I'm glad you guys finally are here in person, talking with us. And I do, to Ms. Hubick's point about kind of density and multifamily, I mean, this kind, the idea of doing cottage homes was after multiple conversations of how do we, if this is a, if this is a parcel that the city owns, how do we maximize that parcel to help as many families as possible? And after touring some in Burlington, we saw the sites, because those were the sites that are developed but not built on, right?
Yeah, Mount Vernon.
Mount Vernon. And then we also went and visited some completed homes in Seadrill Woolley. We realized that that 1,200 square foot limit for cottage homes was pretty much in line with what they, what you guys currently build across the, across the county, so.
And since we'll be going up, that'll make that easier to fit them in that space.
Yeah, so, so I'm excited to like have this as an example, and I think that, you know, if we can show that this makes sense and, and get it built out, that there could be opportunity for other individuals or organizations who want to provide more land for it. My one question is, and maybe this isn't an issue, but we're, it's going to be a two-story versus one-story? Is there any concern with the cost involved with that, or is that no big deal?
No.
Okay.
No concern.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
Do we know what the current assessed value of the property is on West Fifth?
Mr. Miesmer.
That's a great question. I don't have that answer in front of me. We can certainly put that together for you for the future.
Thanks. Mr. Walters.
Well, I appreciate how you've shaped the proposal consistent with the feedback from the HACs Committee. As Ms. Cleland McGrath was alluding to, we have done quite a bit of work and had quite a few discussions about this. Maximizing the number of units, targeting people who live here or at least work here. I do think that the corner lot that Mr. Miesmer identified is a better location for a neighborhood park. Obviously, it frees up this location. I think notably, this would be the first Habitat project in Anacortes.
I believe so, yes.
So I'm pretty eager to get this going. I think that, as we've talked about ad nauseam, housing is the number one problem the city faces. And it seems to me that the next step is a lease agreement. At one point, we had talked about a lease agreement and an MOU. It's not clear to me we need both, maybe just a lease agreement, simplify, could move this forward. And I'd be in favor of giving the head nod to staff to make that happen.
And you guys could write in that lease, the extended affordability as well?
Right, yeah, there are a couple of questions to be figured out. But once we have the framework, I think we'll have the menu of options to select from and we can move it forward.
All right, well, I mean, I'll take a head nod from council and get moving with a lease agreement that obviously will come back to council. Yes. Okay, that seems good enough to bring a, some sort of lease agreement back. Oh, Ms. McCorgo, yeah, come on up. Yep, yep, you gotta, you gotta come up to the microphone. Mr. Franciac might not get all the.
I just want to reemphasize, I have been a volunteer for Habitat for Humanity in another community for over a decade, and it is a, it is amazing, amazing organization. And it really is the only equity-based affordable housing concept that has proven its success. And that's what we need more in Anacortes than we need more rental affordable housing. And although it's not exclusively the only thing that we should be looking at, but it is a huge plus for Anacortes if we can move forward on this. And I wanted to add that in the other communities that I've worked in for Habitat, we have partnered with Home Depot and local contractors to, we get. with Home Depot and local contractors to, we get all of Home Depot's floor models of their new appliances, they donate it to us, they donate excess plumbing, electrical, and wiring, fixtures, and components to Habitat. There are private contractors that donate their time to Habitat. There's a developer that for every plat he develops, he donates two lots to Habitat for Humanity to build a comparable house, but smaller in scale, in that development. And everything, every single time, that has just proven fantastic. And I would also like to suggest that the extra tract A that is in, that was brought up in the Habitat for Humanity project that is being considered for turning it into a park, I would like to suggest that the city hold on to that as another possible equity project, equity housing, affordable housing project, whether it's another Habitat for Humanity project or someone else who has a different concept but is looking for land. And I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Well, staff got the direction from council, and we'll move forward.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
In response to Mr. Carter's question, I just looked it up here. The assessed value for what it's worth is $300,000 on this parcel.
All right. Thank you. And, okay. Going to move on to Item 6B. This is amending the qualifications for the utility discount program and adding to the unified fee schedule. This was a change to the agenda. This is a discussion item only. And Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and members of the audience. And that's right. Once we started digging into this a little bit, this is not ready for action yet. There's some language in the code that needs to be addressed, and the ordinance to address that is not ready for review yet. But we did, I guess I did, I found out more information about the program. We don't actually do these applications and review until later in the year, so it's not as time-sensitive as I thought. This generally takes place in April-May timeframe. So, we looked at this information a little bit a couple of weeks ago, and just to kind of go over it real briefly again, our discounts right now are based on the poverty rate. We use 150% of the federal poverty rate. This column right here is the poverty rate. This represents 150% of the poverty rate. So, for example, a family of four making up to $41,625 per year would qualify for a 20% discount. We put 200% in here of the federal poverty rate. That was the initial recommendation that staff came up with. There was a request last time to look at the AMI, so I was going to point that out. So, this AMI information comes from this website, huduser.gov. So, a family of four is at $86,100. That's listed right here. 50% of the AMI is listed here. 80% of the AMI is here. So, that same family of four currently qualifying at $41,000, at 200% would be at $55,500. And then, these are the different metrics, of course. 80% of the AMI is $68,000, 50% of $43,000, pretty close to what we are currently offering. And these are the discounts. So, this is a full implement of what a utility bill could look like, including organics, fiber, and Wi-Fi. So, the current rate would put you at just a hair under $175 per month. Our current discount of 20% would discount that by about $35. And then, if we were to up that to 25%, you kind of get the idea there. So, what I really wanted to do was see if council had questions, feedback. I did want to point out, hopefully, it agrees with council. I did schedule this for the HACs Committee for next Thursday to take a deeper dive on it, but I wanted to make sure all council got a look at this, got a chance to study the numbers. And if you have any questions, comments, feedback, I'd love to hear that before that HACs meeting.
Questions from council, maybe particularly ones who aren't on the HACs Committee?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Do we have to have a set amount for people to have to go under to qualify, or can we use a range?
It's like a sliding scale, perhaps? Yeah, I believe there are jurisdictions that do have that. I want to say perhaps Bellingham has a sliding scale, so depending on how much you earn, like, the less you earn, the bigger your discount would be. We've never dealt with anything like that. I mean, obviously, it's possible. We would just have to figure it out.
Mayor.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, as we had discussed, there may be a couple of other question marks as to how procedurally to manage the program, how to receive evidence of people's income. I believe that I have determined, although it's a little opaque, that both Burlington and Mount Vernon have reduced solid waste rates linked to the senior property tax exemption program. And the assessor is going to get us lists of qualifying parcels under the senior property tax exemption program, so we'll know, first of all, how many there are, but also how many we could be applying this, one of these rates to. Bellingham does have the sliding scale. They go from 25% to 75%. So, there are quite a few things to work out here, and I think it will be worth the deep dive at the committee level to try to figure that out.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to share the statistics. I kind of glossed over that part. So, currently, we have 43 people taking advantage of the discount, and of that, we have six who are fiber-only, who are currently living in public housing, 27 who are single households on social security subsidy, and then 10 low-income families.
Mr. Young.
Really, I wanted to just comment on the concept of bringing this forward to council first, and then in indicating that it will go into committee for further deliberation, thoughts, deep dives into what it is. Because what it really does for the rest of the council members that are not necessarily on a particular committee, by bringing it forward this way and presenting at least the initial part of it, it allows those questions that we may have, you know, to be able to be brought forward and then embedded into the thought processes for those committee members that will have a chance to go deep into it. And then, we come forward with whatever resolutions or ideas that come out of it. I really appreciate that. I'm looking forward to us doing more of that in all departments, because really what it does is allows us that are not in a particular committee the chance to really think for just a second on it and see those questions for the deeper dive by the committee members to make sure that they're answered and brought forward at the time of the full-blown presentation. Thank you.
Thanks. And I think, just a reminder, correct me if I'm wrong, our current program is using the 150% of the poverty rate and a 20% discount.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, more work to be done here.
Thank you.
All right. We're on to Item 6C, Access Anacortes Fiber Internet Quarterly Update. And I couldn't read that slow enough for you to set up your slideshow. Miss you, but whenever you're ready.
Mayor, council, members of the audience, it's nice to be back in front of you to provide you an update on Access Anacortes Fiber Internet. On a real regular basis, we receive questions about what our rates are, and do they include taxes, and when are you going to raise the rates? And those are easy answers when you're managing the fiber department, because the rates are set by city council. It's not something that, just on a whim, that the mayor or I could say, oh, we need to increase the rates. It would be a public conversation that's encouraging to members of the community. And also, there's not any taxes because we're providing an internet-only service, and so our internet is not a taxed utility. The other thing that comes up as a question is, well, how long do I need to sign up for this service? And we allow people to have just a month-to-month service for residential customers, and then for business customers, we do ask for and require a 12-month commitment from them. So, your work in laying the foundation for how we offer internet makes it easy to manage and to be able to speak to the public about the different service offerings that we have. We track on a monthly basis, and I typically just provide you a 13-month window of what our, like, customer count is and the revenue associated with that. So, you can see that in December of 2021, we had 976 customers in service, and we were bringing in a monthly revenue of $63,437. At the end of business today, we had 1,710 customers in service, and that equates to over $107,000 a month in revenue. Let's provide some information in terms of our customer orders and the breakdown of the different service levels that are provided. We have a nice mix of residential customers that are going with our 100-megabit service and going with our gigabit service. Some choose to have the managed Wi-Fi for a $10 additional fee. So, from our residential customers, we have 1,552 customers, and we have 158 business customers. Keep moving this around. So, the take rate in the areas where we currently are offering service, that means every house that we pass, what is the percentage of customers that are signing up for our service? In the Pila area, which was the first area that we started building out and put our first customer into service in March of 2020, we're at over a 50% take rate. So, if you have service, your neighbor might not, but the neighbor next door on the other side, it does. So, that, I think, is a great testimony to the services that we are offering. In the West End, where we recently completed the construction, we have a 45.1% take rate. And so, we're seeing a real nice increase when construction is occurring, that those orders are coming in, and then when construction is complete, that when we're doing the installations, people are talking amongst their neighbors, and that continues to raise the number of orders that we're receiving in that area. So, the Guenis area is currently under construction now, and that's a smaller area that we're building out. There are 872 premises that we're passing, but we're seeing a steady climb even from last month, that we're now at a 29.9% take rate. So, I think that those are all positive items in regard to the potential growth that we still have remaining within the network and our build-out.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
And also, a reminder that our original model was 35%.
Thank you.
So, we're exceeding that model everywhere, except for the place where we haven't actually turned on the service yet.
Yes, thank you. That is really important to know. All of our business planning, as we are looking at the efficacy of the program, it was based on a model where 30, there was a 35% take rate. So, to be exceeding that in all the areas that we have service really is beneficial. So, as we had projected, in the middle of 2022, we did become cash flow positive for our operating expenses. I would like to point out that the first three columns here are quarters. So, this is first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, and then you're looking at the month of October and November for the next two columns. So, beginning in quarter two, we became, had, became, having a positive operating cash flow. That continued into quarter three, and it will continue into the fourth quarter of 2022. You will notice in November that there was a negative cash flow, and that was where we made an interest payment on our line of credit. So, that was just over $29,000. So, had that not taken out that month, it would have been a cash flow positive, but I think it tells a good story that we're paying down that interest. We do keep our construction costs separate, so this is part of our longer-term expenses for the build-out of the network. So, just where we are year-to-date, we've spent just over $4 million in terms of the cash flow that we've spent towards our fiber expansion. So, now, I'll go into just a deeper dive, but this is the broad picture that you're accustomed to seeing. The green areas are our current service areas. Guenis View is where we're currently building out, and then the EDA will be the next large project that we're working on. In the West End, we have passed 2,302 premises. The cost of that project was $7.22 million, and the funding for that was through the line of credit and a large portion through ARPA. Guenis View passes 872 premises. We're projecting that it'll be $3.88 million. We're using operating cash flow that is available, as it's available. We have a $500,000 grant from Skagit County, and debt will, debt services will offset the remainder. The final area, the EDA area, the Economic Development Administration Grant is why we call that, that area, we received a $2.25 million grant from the EDA. So, that expansion area, we're just calling the EDA area. We will pass 1,815 premises. We think that the backbone cost will be $4 million, and we'll use cash flow as it is available, the EDA grant, and then debt for, we believe, $1.75 million. So, Guenis View is currently under construction. We have broken this up into a project a little bit differently than some of the other areas. Just to give you the parameters, this is from Annacopper Mine Road all the way to A Avenue on the east side. The construction's underway, and this is the piece of equipment that they're using for building the trenching. I've seen the videos as well. It provides a 10-inch trench, and I don't know if you can kind of see here, but there's a trough on the side. I'm sorry, I don't have another picture of it. And then, the grindings come down out of that trough and make a nice, clean area where that all can be reclaimed afterwards. So, we're working with Summit X on that contract for the trenching, and we will do separate aerial construction and the pulling of the fiber afterwards. So, Summit is working with us on the trenching and on the vault placement. I should mention that customers' installations, we believe that they will begin in mid-2023. So, this is the EDA expansion area, all the areas in yellow. We're backfilling the areas where we currently have service provided. We have completed the review of the right-of-way and gained, obtained easements where necessary. That allowed us to finish the design work, and the site certification is underway. Following that, we will, at the same time, we are also preparing our materials bid. And as we get a better sense after the materials bid is placed and we come to contract with that, when we have a better sense of when the materials will be available, that will help us determining the timing for the construction bid. If it's a year out, we may wait a little bit of time, but things are leaning towards, and certainly, the, anecdotally, the stories are that some of the supply chain demands are getting better as we get further from COVID. I do just want to point out that there is a complex grant administration requirements with this, and at every step of the way, we need to have a head nod from the EDA. We're very appreciative of the funding, but there are some complexities that sometimes it takes the... it takes the schedule out of our control as we're moving forward with that. And then just as a recap, the West End expansion, that construction is complete. We're doing some restoration work of the asphalt in that area. The contractor is back onsite working on that. We currently have 617 customers in service. There's another 419 orders remaining. So if you get a phone call, and it's a Brian Carpenter from who is our business coordinator, and he's trying to get something scheduled, take that appointment, because otherwise you may be two or three weeks out. So we work to install up to 20 customers per week. It really depends on the complexity of the installation process, but that is our goal. This is just another way of looking at the same information that I've shared with you, just in terms of how many premises we're passing, what is the timeframe, and the different funding sources. The Federal Communications Commission has released a national broadband map, and I would encourage the community to follow this link to broadbandmap.fcc.gov. They are looking for information. Every single address in the United States, you should be able to type in your address and find what is considered to be the service offerings for your specific site. As you can see here, and I know it's really small, but I put in the city of Anacortes, 904 Sixth Street, and so City Hall facility. It provides a list of the different providers here, and you can see the city of Anacortes is showing up as a provider, as a fiber to the premises, with 1,000 download and 1,000 upload speed. And it also provides some other organizations that have indicated through this mapping, where we had to go in and provide this information to every premise that we currently have service to. But everybody, all the other providers did that, too. There are places where information is probably inaccurate, and so there's a very short window to go in and challenge it. But I went into the site, I've done it a couple times, and looked to see what was available at my home, and I think that it's showing faster service than what I'm actually getting. So you can put in a challenge for that. There was a situation today, I was on a broadband call, that somebody did do this, and the next day, the provider called and said, "We want to come out and fix our service so it matches what your map says." So there are some good options, but we really need people to look at it. And this is nationwide, so if you have families, states, you know, other states, encourage them to do this as well, too, because we're trying to really get accurate information about who and where and what broadband is available.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
No, just, I wanted to echo how important that is, because again, you know, it really does help us identify where there are other solutions and when there were problems, because quite honestly, prior to the city deciding to take this on, you know, we had a myriad of problems in trying to get internet, quality internet access, and trying to work through it all. So it's so important, and you know, and as the city began to take this on, all of a sudden, you can find some providers that weren't as attentive are suddenly trying to become attentive. So in this case, I would appreciate, even if we were to do this reminder once a week, because just trying to find ways for people to realize how important it is for them to look up their address and to support, to make sure that this is a good process for us all. So thank you for bringing that up.
And we will add this link to our fiber website and even the homepage, so people can see and go on and look at it. I think that this is also just a good example that sometimes you're like, "Well, what is the fiber department doing?" We're collecting all this type of information to show every single premise that we're passing to ensure that there's accurate information at a federal level. So we do have a lot of reporting requirements that come from being an Internet service provider. So we will get information out. Please do encourage people to go in and do this and look at what their address is showing as Internet options. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the fiber department.
Questions, members of the public? Counsel? All right. Such a great presentation. We can move on, except for you, Ms. Hsu, because you have the next item, which is Resolution 3105, City of Anacortes, 2023 Legislative Priorities. And this is a discussion item only.
Tonight, we are doing really a first review of the city of Anacortes's legislative priorities. This is really intended to be an interactive conversation, and I appreciate today that I did receive some feedback this afternoon from Mr. Walters, and I apologize, I was in meetings all day today, so we haven't incorporated that in, but feel free to interject with comments. So the city of Anacortes, every year, does provide legislative priorities. It gives us an opportunity to have a conversation with, that is focused with our legislators, that the city council is suggesting, that helps the mayor, that helps the staff as we're talking to legislators. I thought just some interesting information. This will be an odd number, this is an odd-numbered year for the legislature, so that means that it's a long session. Session will start on January 9th, and it'll be 105 days, and will go through April 24th. Cities are home to 65% of our state's residents, and so it's really a great opportunity for cities to spend the time to develop legislative priorities, because then we can help to influence in a way that's proportionate to the role of cities within the state of Washington. It also helps us, as I mentioned, to be able to have just more focused conversations when we are speaking with our legislators. Oftentimes, the city will have legislative priorities that closely mirror what the Association of Washington Cities has put together. They don't necessarily have to, but that's been our trend in the last couple of years. And so I've included the AWC's legislative priorities here. As we were drafting our version, which is very much just a, let's focus on the data, and then we'll make it pretty afterwards, but we're trying to do three different things. We're seeking clarification, what our funding request is, and what type of further investment beyond that funding request we are looking for. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the work that Jennifer Tottenham has done on this. She really is like the central knob that all of this gets focused together, and then she makes the magic happen behind the scenes. So thank you to Ms. Tottenham. So similar to what the Association of Washington Cities has put together, one of the proposed priorities is to respond to the Blake decision. I know that there's some continued information that we might like, and it is very helpful if we can make these specific to the city of Anacortes. I'm sorry, there's so much writing on these. I was trying to not have you just look at the screenshot, but it ends up being just way too much information. So we are asking for clarification around the crime of possessing a controlled substance so that individuals, law enforcement, and treatment providers can respond appropriately. I know that Mr. Walters had some more focused suggestions there that we're happy to look at and incorporate. Then we've asked for, that's like the clarification, some funding, and then further investment. Do you want to take some time and just open up to counsel for discussion on this, and we'll take notes as we go?
Mr. Walters.
Last all of them, I'd suggested that we be a little bit more specific about what it is we want to achieve. My sense is the Association of Washington Cities is trying to find something that hundreds of their city members can coalesce around, but we can be more specific, because we just have to represent Anacortes. So in this instance, I suggested that what we say is, we want the legislature to modify the drug possession statute to delete the requirement, and I provided the citation, for law enforcement to twice refer to treatment persons that are subject to arrest for drug possession, because I think that's specifically what we have heard law enforcement has chafed at, and my judgment is really not an effective requirement in the statute anyway. I mean, the intent to get people into treatment is good. My sense is it just doesn't function. And then I also suggested that we tell the legislature that we want them to continue to characterize drug possession as a misdemeanor or a gross misdemeanor, rather than as a felony, which is what it was prior to the Blake decision. And rather than decriminalizing drug possession entirely or in part, which was one of the suggested solutions in the legislature during the debate following the Blake decision. And then I would separate those investment sections into a different section of the legislative priorities document, so that our legislators can look at the policy substance at the top and the budget substance at the bottom.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hsu.
Thank you. Just want to let the people who are watching at home, people that are in the audience, and just a reminder to my fellow council members, legislative staff, like myself, have a very strict prohibition on lobbying, and lobbying in its most generalized form is trying to influence legislation. And I want to be careful about what I say tonight. I don't want to give anybody a sense of whether or not the office that I serve will support or not support anything in one way, but what I can say as somebody that has to track this is that Mr. Walters is right. Sometimes it's a lot easier when you're managing a big spreadsheet, and you've got 15 cities that you're hearing from, to see something that says, "I want one of three options," because when I'm updating this stuff to give to my representative, I can go click, and there's a little check mark, and then I can show him what all of the cities in our legislative district do. I'm not speaking for the other 97 members of the House. I'm not speaking for the other two people in our district, but having things very plain and very obvious does make it a lot easier for me to communicate if y'all aren't able to get a hold of my members specifically. And same thing, too, with like anything that has to do with budget requests or monetary requests. I have a whole nother spreadsheet where I track that stuff, because we love spreadsheets in our job, and just having things as simple and as obvious as possible does make my life easier. But also, yes, thank you to staff for the work that goes into this. This is not easy. Bills are already starting to drop, and once session starts, it's going to be kind of a mad race to the finish for 105 days. So thank you.
Thank you. I think that's helpful feedback. I will then move on, unless there's additional comment in regard to Blake, to the vehicle pursuits. So the next item is addressing vehicle pursuits for public safety. And again, I know that Mr. Walters provided some suggested feedback there.
Mr. Walters.
And I sent this to counsel as well, but what I'd suggested was that we specifically say that we want the legislature to revise or eliminate the restrictions on vehicular pursuits by police officers. They might do either. They might revise or eliminate, but the harm, I think, that the legislature was trying to avoid was high-speed pursuits, and that statute that is cited doesn't specifically call out high-speed pursuits. It's all of them. And then I also suggested that maybe we should try the reverse, which is to consider revising or increasing the penalty for eluding a police vehicle. That's currently a Class C felony, but it doesn't make any reference to high speed. A high-speed pursuit could be maybe an enhanced penalty provision. Anyway, that strikes me as that's a better approach than tying police hands for almost all crimes. So I propose that we provide that specificity there, without endorsing any particular bills, because bills can evolve as the legislature moves on, but providing specificity on exactly what it is we think we want.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, just wanted to add, I appreciated Mr. Walters' memo that he circulated and the specificity on both the first item and the vehicle pursuits. I definitely tend to agree with.
Thank you. I do agree every time we can provide something that is very specific about how we can, what we're asking for, but also how it may apply in Anacortes. I think that is the message that is easier for us to bring and tell the story about. I didn't want to mention some other things that we want to make sure that we include is language about restoring the Sydney-Anacortes run through Washington State ferries is something that certainly is a priority for our community. And then we are also evaluating the Port of Anacortes and Island Health's legislative priorities as well, because if there are things that as a community, then we can be kind of consistent in our messaging, that can be helpful when you're going in and making an ask or a request. One thing, then, we haven't really figured out exactly where it falls, and maybe it falls someplace under the Public Works Assistance Account or just the general infrastructure, is that there is some language on the books that limits the authorization for public works contracts that is almost 30 years old, that limits that to $7,500 before it needs to have a full contract put together, and I believe brought before council. So in terms of authorization, some of that may be a bit outdated, and I may be saying it wrong. I apologize, Ms. Swatton, if I'm saying that wrong, but it is something that we're looking at to see, is there a way that we can incorporate that so that it makes sense, so that we're not, considering inflation, that we're not being held to numbers, you know, from the late 80s.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I think what you're referring to is the requirement for a full-blown bid process associated with contracting out public services. And I don't think that the statutes are even consistent among classes of local government. And I completely agree that especially with inflation, but even before higher inflation, it was a pretty low dollar value, and it makes a whole lot more sense to have more streamlining in those requirements. So I didn't see that in the draft, but I would support including that, as well as the Sydney ferry run.
Okay. Thank you. It's just nice to get those headlines.
And I tend to think that the Sydney ferry does fit under infrastructure, because all of those are budget requests and because it's an extension of the state highway system.
So the next item then is ensuring the infrastructure funding, and a lot of this focus is specific to the Public Works Assistance Account. Money has been taken from that account very consistently over the last several years and funded a funnel to help offset other projects. So we are thinking about and asking that they stop pummeling that account so that it can be used truly as it is intended. At the same time, I would like it to also be expanded, to be able to include broadband infrastructure. And so I'm asking for, you know, stop taking money away from it, but also maybe to consider other ways that are important infrastructure projects that we have going on.
Ms. Walters.
So I think here, we should also be very explicit and say, "We want no little budget provisos that prevent us from applying to the state broadband office for funding when there's an incumbent provider." There's always some incumbent provider, it seems, and if you're offering a different class of service, it could be a different set of points that are considered for grant awards, or it could be something else, but just the flat prohibition that they've included in the budget has been obviously an obstacle for us, but it just doesn't make sense. It's just a giveaway to providers.
I was just hoping it would be more like any other utility or infrastructure project as far as funding. as far as funding, but broadband has a very special circumstance.
Yes, it does. The next item is specifically about housing. And I know that Anacortes is working really hard to try and come up with Anacortes-specific options to help address the housing issues that we do have in providing long-term options for affordable housing. So we're trying to find those resources, and I think then the Association of Washington Cities really has done a good job of saying, like, really, this is something that needs to be determined at a community level. And I think that we're probably steps ahead with all the work that the HACs committee has been doing to try and address this. So we will make this more Anacortes-specific. And I think then, again, Mr. Walters provided some helpful information to that specificity.
Mr. Walters.
And so I'd specifically mentioned an ask for flexibility for cities to dedicate lodging tax funds for affordable housing, which is something that came up repeatedly in the AWC Housing Solutions Work Group. That has faced opposition from the hotel motel industry, but they also need workers for their hotels. And there was also included in the AWC Housing Solutions Work Group platform proposal to allow cities to adopt an additional tier of REIT to pay for affordable housing. And that calculates to something like $750,000 a year in Anacortes. So that as an option, I think, would be useful. And it's part of their platform, so if we include that, I think it gives more support from, you know, one more city to the AWC Housing Solutions Work Group platform. So I suggested inclusion of both of those measures.
Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougal.
Mr. Walters brings up a good point. So did you mention like a new classification of REIT? Or is this, I know existing REIT I and REIT II, they've got certain limits on what they can be spent on, and I don't think, like, affordable housing projects are part of that. Is that correct?
Correct. So what AWC was suggesting was a third tier of REIT that local jurisdiction could adopt that could be spent only on affordable housing.
Got it. Would that be better as an alternative than to simply opening up REIT I, REIT II to affordable housing projects?
In my judgment, yes, because it would rob our maintenance budget.
Got it. Thank you.
I'm curious if any, because we're trying to make it, you all are trying to make it Anacortes-specific, if we've reached out any of the LTAC collectors about their opinion, because that one seems to be a little bit more controversial. And maybe that's, maybe there's an opportunity to do that before we bring it back.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Young.
I am very much a supporter of housing availability and affordability. It's just who I am as a person. I do think, though, that my hesitation about having lodging tax funds being allocated for this purpose is that it defeats the very purpose with which lodging tax funds is supposed to increase the heads and the beds, and especially for small communities trying to use those dollars to, you know, draw people to our area for a variety of reasons. I support, however, REIT III in that sense, that it allows those dollars to be used, you know, for this very purpose. I think Anacortes is doing a tremendous effort, well beyond, I think, its structure and size as a city. It's just commendable. It really is. But I do think, though, that with, given the number of dollars that we have that are being put toward this issue, as we fight our way through it in a legislative standpoint, it would be also important to be able to use those dollars that we already have to purchase land that's coming up for sale, whether foreclosure or whatever it is, so we can continue to build housing on it. You know, I just think that a blanket approach right now is just not quite what we should be doing. As we find our way through and as new suggestions and new ideas come forward, it will allow us to be able to do that. So, you know, very much I'm agreeing with this process. I just think that the lodging tax fund itself, it should be kept separate for the time being and not advocated for, because the purpose of the lodging tax fund is to draw people to our area and to use those dollars to sort of lift the city and make it far more appealable. I just don't want us to conflate the two of those at this point. That would be my only hesitation.
Mayor Miller.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with Mr. Young about not diluting the purpose of LTAC dollars. One thing that we heard from our local representatives, state level, was that they were trying to do the property tax exemption for affordable homes for affordability based on area-to-area income. We had some meetings on it, I think, early last year. It didn't quite make sense to do that property tax exemption over, I don't know, eight years or 12 years. But one thing that did come out of our conversations, both with representatives and with our HACs committee, was the idea that, is there a way to remove, to waive sales tax during the construction of permanently affordable housing? And I think that that's something that would be interesting. I don't know if that's something we could put on this legislative priorities, but has been a discussion point, at least at the HACs level and with some of our representatives, that that could make sense, because it doesn't require, it's a huge chunk of the construction costs that have to then be financed for the next number of years. And if that could be waived, it's a way to kind of make it a little bit more affordable, but kind of take that, the hit, earlier on. So maybe we could explore that somewhat as a proposal for the state.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I have repeatedly pitched that at the AWC Housing Solutions Work Group and to our representatives, and I'll forward it to Ms. Schu, so that she's got it, because I still think it has merit. There is an existing statute that provides for a sales tax remittance for a qualifying commercial office space project. If you changed a couple of the words, you could make it available for multifamily development or for multifamily development for low income. So I'll, it seems really simple and straightforward, and far simpler than the property tax exemption, and far more easier to take advantage of if you're a builder. So I would support its inclusion.
Yeah, I was going to say, there are multifamily tax exemption. There are opportunities there, but they're pretty complex. And I think, I think what I'm hearing is having additional flexibility in some of those. Sorry, Ms. Schu.
I think it hit the nail on the head that we are looking for some additional flexibility. What I don't know and will look to you is, do we provide three different ideas? Do we just, you know, provide one? Because I think, this is where it'd be very nice if we could ask Ms. Hubick, but I don't want to put her in an awkward spot. But, you know, just it'd be really nice to know, like, you know, is one alternative the best approach, or three? Because how do they decide if it comes down to choosing from one? Mr. McDougal thinks maybe two.
Ms. Hubick, you'll try to.
Well, what I have seen other people do, and what we do in our office, is that we do track, you know, feedback that we get from people. Rep. Ramel has his little tracker where he takes notes, and I have mine, when people in the community will message us in support or in opposition of things. And those are definitely things that help us gauge the interest of the communities that the members represent. So there are a lot of different ways that you can go about it. It really just depends on how many words you actually want to put on your paper. Because remember, the things that you're going to be talking about with your elected officials may not all fit on those papers, and you can always email us after the fact. But while I have your ear too, I want to give something to you to maybe also put on Jennifer's radar. Sorry, honey. But the Tax Structure Work Group is meeting tomorrow for one of their last meetings before they head into decision-making. And one of the things that's actually on the agenda tomorrow is talking about the property tax limit factor, which currently sits at 101-plus inflation and property growth, or population growth and stuff like that. And so they're looking to possibly change that to either 103% or 105%, which is, I know, one of the things that some cities have struggled with. So if anybody is interested, there's an agenda on the website. The URL is just taxworkgroup.org. The meeting is televised on TBW tomorrow. There is a Zoom link that you can join in. If you're even moderately interested in tax policy, like I am, I'll be watching. But that's something that if they make a decision tomorrow to move forward with it or to not, that could be something else that maybe if it doesn't make the legislative agenda, because I know that those are conversations that have been had here, it could be a priority for a later conversation. So just wanted to put that on your radar.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
The multifamily property tax exemption program that I think Representative Ramel worked on and pitched to us at a 20-year level, we discussed with various builders, and builders said, we're not really that interested in that, because it's too complicated, because the benefit is too remote. And what we really want is a sales tax exemption, that that would work better. The benefit would be realized sooner. It would be easier to build it into your pro forma. It seems to me that the one opponent of that would be the counties, because the counties get some sales tax. But on the other hand, 80% of the growth goes in the cities, and it's on the backs of the cities that we need to manage the housing crisis. So because they specifically told us this is what they want, I think it's worth including in this document, even if it's a few more words.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, to expand on that, it wasn't just the builders, it was also the lenders in that situation. Because how do you realize the tax, the benefit of not having to pay that amount of taxes when you go to sell it? But I think more than that is the fact that the property tax exemption, it's not quite as palatable for the community or the public as something like the sales tax exemption because, and also for developers. Because the challenge with the property tax exemption is it has to be monitored for 20 or 30 years, whereas a sales tax is very specific and happens upfront. And so to me, I would like to see the sales tax exemption somehow incorporated into our legislative priorities, because from a monitoring perspective by the city, and from a development perspective by, I think, the Family Center as one of our nonprofit builders, affordable builders, and some of the other folks, like, I think even the housing authority would benefit from this, as they're building their townhomes. This seems like, this seems to have every kind of involved party on board if we could get that through the legislature.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, I'm in complete agreement. I mean, I think, you know, the sales tax exemption, that's a one-time procedural thing that the builder has to do, as opposed to like filing something every year for 20 years. I mean, just a great reduction in friction to actually getting something done. I also like the REIT III. That's why I held up the two fingers.
All right. I think we, Ms., go ahead. Ms. Schu, and then Ms. Moulton.
This is really helpful feedback and gives us a great breadth to build from. I just would like a little bit more clarification about thinking that maybe not moving forward with reaching out to LTAC, because maybe we'll take that off the list through the conversation? Okay. I'm seeing some head nods. Thank you. That's helpful to me.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schu. I would want to add my head nod to the sales tax exemption and the additional tier of REIT.
All right. I think we got that.
Great. Thank you. The final one that we have, just in terms of our draft, has to do with behavioral health resources and finding support for behavioral services and alternative response programs. So again, I appreciate that we have some feedback from Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I think it goes without saying, we've been asking for this for a while, but I know ASK has long identified this area. Every organization has long since identified the area, but I think we need to keep reminding the state, we need some help here.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I think when we talk about behavioral health services, we should be using words like substantial and revolutionary. And we have heard from a variety of providers, including court commissioner on our Housing and Affordable and Community Services Committee, about the sorry state of behavioral health services and involuntary treatment services, and the number of social workers available, and almost every aspect of it seems to be broken. And we have never found a person who can explain the whole system to us. And I've mentioned that to at least one legislature, legislator who said, yeah, when you find that person, let me know as well. I mean, we are in such a sorry state here. I think that we should be very direct. And so some of the text I'd suggested was, you know, provide substantial improvements in behavioral health service capacity, including voluntary and involuntary treatment for both drug addiction and mental health, which is kind of captured in behavioral health. But I do think that we should work in that involuntary treatment provision as well, because for some people, there isn't really an option. And there was recently just some news pieces, including the New York Times, about how New York City is going to start leveraging part of their existing law, laws that we have as well, to civilly detain and commit people that are in a bad way with respect to substance abuse or mental health, even if they're not a danger to self for others. And again, we have the laws on the books, but we don't have the capacity. And we just seem to lack capacity all across the board. So I know that the legislature has worked on some of these issues, but we're not seeing the results yet. I also reached out to Congressman Larson's office to suggest that the United States Congress could help us out by lifting the 16-bed limit on Medicaid-funded behavioral health treatment centers. I don't, I didn't, obviously didn't get any kind of commitment from his office, but, you know, we need action at the federal level as well. There's not a whole lot that they can do, but lifting that funding cap certainly would help. Just, we are in such a bad way, and there's so many pieces of this, and there's so many things to fix. Maybe this one should be at the top.
Suggestions? Mr. Young.
No, just, you know, I think all of this is just so wonderfully clear, and it gives clarity to what we're really asking as not only a society of caring people, but also as a society to try to mitigate some of the craziness that seems to be happening in our world. I do think, though, that, you know, when we start talking about priorities as a city, and that these larger issues that are global per se, you know, I'm hoping that our legislative members, you know, really fully understand. You know, mental health is a huge issue that we're facing as a country. We've known this for quite a while. It's only now that we're able to talk about it, and sort of it becomes cool to sort of say, these are the things we need to address. So I'm sure, Ms. Schu, that your pen is almost out of ink, but you still have to try to figure out how you condense that, such that this can be far more of a broad-brushed approach to what we can do in it as a city. We can begin to use some of the tools we have to address the issues that we know we're confronting, such that we don't become, such that we can maintain the quality of life we want, have services. want, have services that can begin to address some of the needs that we currently have here, addressing those issues and how we can fund that. So, yeah, I didn't want us to get too far into the weeds on this, but I do think that those are important points that we need to make to our legislators and whether it's MRC, MRSE, or any of the other agencies. As long as they're clear that this is a priority, I think we've done our job and done it well. The work rests on us as a city to figure out what we can do with the limited resources we have. So I didn't want you to continue to writing so many things that won't be able to be put in. Thank you.
So again, if after tonight, if there's still things that council wants to address, you know, the plan would be to try to bring this back next week, but hopefully you can address it in the next couple of days as you're sleeping, sleeping on it.
Can I add one?
Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, so just to round out the idea of voluntary to involuntary treatment, I think we also need to somewhere really clearly state inpatient treatment, because that's, we've had a, we had a lot of meetings, already talked to a lot of people, and yes, we can go out, we have someone who can, a social worker can go out and talk to someone during the crisis, but what doesn't exist is after the immediate crisis happens for a person, the time it takes, the lapse in time between the crisis and then being onboarded into, and then having services available to them is incredibly long, weeks long. And that's really where I think we're, we see this disconnect. And so it's, it's that inpatient holistic wraparound programs like Dijwali is doing that we need, and it can't be a city who does that. It's gotta be a network across the state. So that has to be stressed there. I think the state has done really well, kind of funding this social worker and mental health care worker through the fire department for six months. It's great about sending out kind of $40,000 or $100,000 for this and that, but what we really need is, is that building where folks can go in and, and have the treatment, like, what's it, North Star, not North Star, that's the other, North Sound. And I think that that, that needs to be stated in there, please.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Adding on to that, one of the things that we're hearing about, about funding is from different service providers, is there seems to be quite a lot available right now, but there aren't, there's not the labor force to receive it. So even if they have money, they don't have anything to spend it on because there aren't people. So I don't know if there's a place in our legislative priorities to talk about improving the labor pipeline for social workers, for behavioral health professionals, and for police, right? Because these people aren't coming up into these professions. So is there a way that the state can do something with universities or tuition or breaks or, to make it attractive financially? And that would be an investment. So I'm not sure we can talk about this more later, but that would help.
We got, we got all five pages now of our, no, it's, sorry. All right, you know, I've heard from a lot of, I've heard from multiple council members many times. Mr. Carter, do you have anything to, okay.
Last one, I promise. Last one, I promise. I was just gonna say, from what Councilmember Moulton said, the county's already asking for this, so make sure that at some point between now and the legislative session, that you, what I've seen other people do and what I've seen this area do before is, just like what happened with the mayor's police letter, talk with the county, talk with the other cities, see what they're doing. And it's not uncommon for counties and cities to go in together on requests like inpatient treatment. And if the county's doing a capital budget request, what can you do to support it and opening up the pipeline? Like, those conversations are already being had. And to save yourself a little bit of time sometimes, just piggyback on the back of everybody else's good work.
Yeah, I think we all realize that we're not going to get a larger than a 16-bed treatment facility maybe here in Anticorda, so it is a county-regional issue. So point well taken there.
Then the information and feedback that you've provided has been very helpful, and this is an open to the public too, so I don't know if you want to ask me?
Yeah, well, any members of the public want to jump in on this one? Yeah, all right. Ms. McKenzie, come on up.
I just had a couple of things I wanted to add to the discussion. When you're talking about behavioral, behavioral services, most of you maybe weren't around back then, but in the eighties, they, there were problems in the institutions and mistreatment of the mentally ill, and the solution was a sledgehammer. They dumped them out on the streets. And the promise was that the services would be available, which they never were. I worked in the field of social work for 30 years, and the rule of thumb is no services I ever observed were funded for more than 60% of the actual need. And I worked in a mental health center, among other things, where that was very evident. So I, I think that, that we need to keep that in mind if we're talking about, about where this funding is going and what kind of funding is needed, and, and make sure that the resources get put where they're needed. Second area I wanted to comment on was the whole housing tax thing. I would certainly support tax exemptions and tax reductions to provide incentive for low-income or supported housing. If you start talking about a third tranche of REIT costs and taxes, if that means a tax increase, that's a little hard to sell. I think if you are going to go ahead and do that, make sure that it's spent on capital expenditures and not operations. It doesn't make any sense to start producing a bow wave cost with, for, with raised taxes and throw it basically good money after not-so-good results. So let's see, let's see the money spent where it'll produce some long-term solutions, such as the Habitat for Housing people were talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are we ready to move on, council? A lot of good discussion, thank you for that.
Again, just wanted to thank for the discussion. So there's a pretty quick turnaround to be able to have this in the packet for Wednesday, so would love any feedback tonight or tomorrow, so that we can get that incorporated and into the package to bring back next week. We do have time if we need to move this into January, but I think that we have really good foundation from the conversation tonight, so thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to Item 6E, Resolution 3100, Establishing Real Property Purchase Checklist. This is discussion and possible action. I think we've seen this a couple of few times, the goal being provide guidance to staff when it comes to any potential real estate purchase, making sure we capture all the things on the checklist. Ms. Swetnam?
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council, members of the audience. So this is, as you said, a resolution bringing back a checklist for potential purchases of real property. And this has been to council now a couple of times, and we've gotten some really valuable feedback. So the packet includes a track changes version that I, I believe captures all of the feedback and comments that we had at the last discussion. So I'm happy to answer any questions or if there are any additional changes, if not, staff recommends approval.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Swetnam. I have a question about 2B1 authorization. It says the purchase and sale agreement may specify the feasibility period, and then that's referred to later on reporting back. So that's, that's like a maybe feasibility period rather than a must-do feasibility period?
That wasn't the intention with that language. One of the discussion points that came up last time was adjusting that language under Section 4 that talks about reporting back to council, you know, after due diligence has happened, but before the expiration of the feasibility period. And so, you know, my intention was that the adjustment to the language in Section 4 really requires that report back to council before the feasibility period. If you feel like the language needs to be stronger in that section 2B1, I'd take your point, and, and we could certainly make some adjustments to that to, to indicate that it really has to identify that feasibility period.
I think that would be good for consistency. Thank you. And my other question is, is there a point in this process in which the city engages, like, a licensed professional, like, real estate person? Because it seems to me that we probably would benefit from that as a city, and I don't, I don't see that here, so I don't, I don't know if that's...
Sure, that's, that is not in, in this checklist, and if council would like to add that in there, that during the due diligence period, the, we do have in there that there's a requirement to get an appraisal or a CMA, and so if council would like to clarify that that requirement needs to include, you know, engaging an expert, that's certainly something we could change as well.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fairly comfortable with the checklist. The thing that I would like to see in addition to the checklist is some type of established relationship with a commercial broker, so that we've got someone that the city is able to have confidential dealings with, in case we want to talk, in case the mayor wants to talk potentially about a property, having that established relationship with someone who has been vetted by their resume and have, has worked with kind of public agencies, either school districts in the county or, or other cities, and understands the nuances, nuances of working with the municipality and the government. I think it would be great for us to have someone who's been interviewed and determined that that's our person, so that we can use them for not only to run, run potential properties by, in a confidential manner, but also run market, and a market analysis, which is before you have an appraisal, a market analysis would be done quickly, not held to any higher, higher expectation than here's kind of what you can find out in a, in a short time. But, but to me, that that's kind of the component that is missing from this, and having a more formal relationship with some commercial broker would be beneficial in the sense that, you know, this is a city and a lot of commercial brokers also, or real estate agents also work with other, other citizens who might have things come before the city, and to not have a conflict of interest or concern that if they're given appraisal that doesn't fit with what the city wants, that that could be an issue. So that's, that's the only component that I really feel is missing, because we've got experts and consultants for everything else. Real estate's a whole other game, right? And, and I think that that would be beneficial to have that kind of consultant, and doesn't cost anything. It's not like we're gonna have to write up a new program, but just so that we've got that relationship established and we can bounce those ideas off.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Those all sound like good things, but I don't think that they need to be reflected in this text, or at least they don't seem to fit. I do have a couple of edits. 2B, Romanate 1 reads, "To proceed with the sale," it seems to me that should be "to proceed with the purchase." And then, and under Romanate 2, it says, "The mayor may execute," and I think what is meant is "may execute" a purchase and sale agreement, and deleting the words "deliver" and "a."
Thanks for that catch.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
I think all of the points that, you know, been brought up, suggestions are wonderful. You know, I just wanted to echo my agreement with Ms. Councilwoman Cleland McGrath. I just think that, given everything that we have, that having that expert, you know, with our interest to give us all of that with, you know, all the teams that we have within here, it just couldn't hurt us at all. But that, you know, if it's not necessary for this document, that's one thing, but if it would be beneficial to have that in there, because I think it would allow us to move that forward and have that in place as these instances come up where we want to do a purchase or we want to do something with real estate, I just think it would be so helpful. But beyond that, I'm very happy with where we are. I'm ready to move forward in whatever we need to do.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like we have a couple of corrections to do, so we can bring this back at a future time.
Thank you. We will get this done at some point, so.
Not something we do very often at, at the city, but thought it would be a good idea to have a checklist to purchase real estate, and the city has purchased real estate before without this checklist. Okay, next is Item 6F, Contract Award Municipal Fiber Network Coordinated Services. Ms. Schu, maybe we should have stacked this, we won't bounce back and forth, but you're up.
Glad to be back again to, to now discuss the municipal fiber network coordinated services with NOAA NET. NOAA NET stands for Northwest Open Access Network, and we utilize NOAA NET as an extension of our fiber department. They provide services to us that if we had to do, directly operate a 24/7/365 network operation center, it would be very cost prohibitive. And they provide some expertise services in terms of design and consulting that are very helpful to us. So this is a one-year contract agreement with NOAA NET with the ability to have two one-year extensions. And I do want to, to call out, we have a much better sense of what the services that we need now are than we did when we initially put this contract together, so we did refine it. That being said, you'll see in Exhibit A that there is a reference, Number 5, to broadband connectivity. That was not intended to make it into this contract. NOAA NET will also concur with that, and we would like to have a separate contract that would be coming forward. A draft was submitted in for, to the contract administrator today to, to look at that. Soon, if council decides to move forward with this contract, I just would ask that you make a recommendation to remove any reference to the broadband connectivity that is included in this, and my apologies for not catching that earlier. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal?
Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation earlier today. That was, that was terrific. And also, thank you to the entire department. We're nearly at 1,600 connected customers, and 42% of the community signed up, you know, two, three years ago. Like, I had a secret hope that we would hit 40%, so the fact that we've exceeded that is amazing, so thank you. Very quickly, no problem on, or, yeah, I agree with doing the, the separate internet connection as, as its own contract. This is something that we've, you know, we've known for a couple of years, it's in the plan to have a separate provider for upstream internet. I did have a quick question, and it's probably for that time when it comes, but today, our upstream fiber is, we have two pass-through wave, one out to La Conner, from the library, out to La Conner via Reservation Road. Our second path is physically diverse in that it takes the city's water treat, the pipe out to the water treatment plant, city fiber, and then it connects to wave, kind of on a Mount Vernon path. And then ultimately, the larger internet, like, is reachable via Seattle, so fiber down to Seattle. There's, do we know if NOAA NET's fiber down to Seattle is basically in a separate, like, I know that there's fiber along the railroad, there's fiber along Highway 9, or is it a northern path?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. We've actually reviewed their KMZ report that shows where the, the internet... We've actually reviewed their KMZ report that shows where the internet is, and it is a separate distinct path and has some different failovers.
Awesome, great. I figured as much, but thanks for clarification.
Mr. Walters.
I move approval of the contract as presented with the deletion of subsection 5.0 broadband connectivity from the scope of work.
Second. Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Young to approve the contract with the deletion of 5.0.1, I believe I got that, 5.0. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please? Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. We are on to item 6G, Contract Award 2023 Prosecution Contract. And first of all, thank Mr. Kamak for hanging on the line there. I noticed he's been there for a while, but Ms. Swetnam, you will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, members of the audience, Mr. Kamak, thank you as well. So this is the contract proposal for prosecution services for 2023. Since I've been at the city, Mr. Kamak has had annual contracts every year to provide contracted prosecution services for the city. Last year, we added an additional prosecutor to the contract, who's Julie Walters, who had been providing support to Mr. Kamak in that role previously. Also, last year, we made a change to the contract to break up the payment structure into two components. So the first component is a flat rate that we pay for prosecution services every month in the amount of $6,700. But then in addition to that, in response to the many challenges and tricky issues that law enforcement is having to navigate, we also added to the contract a $15,000 not-to-exceed amount for services to provide support to law enforcement. And that's something that the police department has taken advantage of this year, and that's been a really valuable addition to that contract. So the contract as written, the total contract amount is $95,400, and that extra $15,000 is to provide support for law enforcement on issues, but also to provide support on issues related to community court, which have proven to be a tricky thing to navigate that's taken additional time for the prosecutors. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions, but maybe first, Mr. Kamak has joined us, and I know he wanted to say a few things about this contract.
Thank you, Ms. Swetnam. Thank you, Mayor Miller. Thank you to the council. I'm at the very end of your docket. I'll keep it brief because I know you probably all want to get home. I've had the privilege of being a prosecutor for Anacortes for 13 years. I've been a prosecutor in some form or another for the last 30 years. It's surprising to me that I can say that. That's not a lot of years that have added up. As you've seen in your agenda on the legislative priorities, you get a sense of what's been happening in the prosecution world, the law enforcement world, over the past couple of years, whether it's use of force, active pursuit, possession of drugs. There have been a sweeping series of changes that have frankly just turned the world upside down in law enforcement and made it very difficult to know where the clear bright lines are or what police officers should do and shouldn't do, and has kept us all guessing, frankly, as to a number of issues and items and decisions that shouldn't be left to guesswork. That is just what you're seeing in your legislative priorities. The courts have been busy doing other things that have changed things throughout law enforcement. And the short summary is I've seen more changes in the prosecution world in the last two years than in the 28 years before that, so it has been active and interesting. We're doing our best to support the police department through very difficult times. Not only is the structure of law enforcement and prosecution changing substantially, but it's happening at a time of increased anxiety and hostility throughout society, which has made it an extra interesting time to deal with the changes of this scope. On a positive note, the court has started community court, which I've spoken to you about before in the past. A brief summary is it's a more of a rest, a restorative court that takes certain offenses and certain offenders and tries to connect them with services and address underlying problems that may have been the root, root cause of the crime. But it has fundamentally, well, it's a whole new process. We've had a high turnover, well, the court has had a high turnover in their community court coordinator. So we have been working with a series of coordinators to develop referral criteria, performance criteria, enforcement criteria, and revocation criteria to make sure the community court is doing what it is intended to do, and in the event that it is not doing what it's intended to do, to make sure that the right cases return to the traditional court system for proper treatment. It has been an interesting couple of years, and we look forward to, again, with the privilege of serving as the prosecutors for 2023.
Thank you. All right, any questions? And, you know, I'll say it out loud, I know that, I know we had a little discussion during the budget about bringing in-house prosecutorial services. We are going to be looking at that during, during this year, and especially as the legislation, you know, as we see new legislation, that'll certainly be something that I intend to engage the staff with council moving forward, but this contract is for 2023 services. Any questions?
I have no questions, Mayor Miller. I am in full agreement. I think this contract is very much needed, and the services that is being provided is needed in our community. I think it's an efficient use of dollars, and I think it gives us the most bang for the buck. So short of that, unless someone else has something else they want to say, I moved we authorized the mayor to sign the 2023 prosecution contract.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDougall to approve the Contract Award 2023 Prosecution Contract. Any additional discussion? Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Kamak, for the presentation. Mr. Kamak is highly regarded in Skagit County. I, however, will be recusing myself from this vote because his partner on this contract, Julie Walters, is a cousin of mine.
Okay, any additional discussion? All right, Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please? Mr. Walters.
abstain.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, and thanks for the good work. No additional items on the agenda. I will adjourn the meeting.